Welcome, everybody. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Here.
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 I'd like to welcome all of you to this, the regular March tenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Geneva Three Oh Four School Board. It's always nice to see a full house. I know a lot of you are getting awards and some of you are proud parents of people getting awards, so that's even nicer. So, welcome sincerely. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is right back there, and Ms. Forbes is going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. There is an attendance sheet when you came in. If you'd like to register your attendance, you may sign in there at any time. Next item is approval of minutes. I know there were two small corrections submitted. Have you had any other corrections submitted, Tammy? Does anyone have any corrections at this time? A motion to approve or accept?
Forbes, so moved.
Wait a minute, we, I think we need a second.
Second.
Okay.
So I called in a little bit late. Do I have to abstain, Larry?
Uh, I'm not gonna beat you to death about that, but if you, you should be safe.
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Aye. Thank you all. Recognition, awards, presentations, and public hearing is next, and this is the tradition of excellence for GHS students. Andy, would you like to introduce Doc?
Yeah, Mr. Rogers is gonna come up. He has a lot of students to acknowledge tonight. Full house, obviously. Many familiar faces, because there's some kids who we see getting recognized multiple times, which is pretty cool. So here, but for those of you who haven't been here before, here's what we're gonna do. The board's gonna make their way around the table. Mr. Rogers is gonna brag about you a little bit, then come up and shake everybody's hand and get your certificate, and then hang up, hang out up here by the screen, and we'll do photo op and all the good stuff. So I'll pass it off to Mr. Rogers while the board makes their way around the table.
Thank you, Dr. Barrett, and thank you very much to the board for the opportunity to honor, once again, students who are doing great things at Geneva High School. We've actually got two waves of recognition to do tonight. We're gonna introduce three groups here first, and then we're going to excuse those who are being honored, and then we're gonna bring another wave from the room next door and do it all over again. So we're gonna start tonight with the National Merit Finalists. In other words, these are really, really smart kids. This group of five seniors at GHS were part of, or back in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three, they, along with about one point three million other juniors in the United States, took the PSAT exam, and this past fall, we were notified that these five seniors had achieved recognition as National Merit semifinalists. And when we learn that in the fall, that means they have to fill out an application, and then we are notified in February as to whether or not they have become a finalist. Needless to say, the five semifinalists that we were notified about in the fall are now being honored tonight as National Merit Finalists. I met with them a few weeks ago. They've received a certificate from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, and tonight, it's my honor to recognize these five students. And once I get them all up here, I'll describe just a little bit more about how prestigious this academic award is. So, for starters, please congratulate Evelyn Gibbons. Ellie Grancherov. Nick Grimes. And finally, Ethan, I'm sorry, not finally, Ethan Ryan is next. And finally, Vitali Starkov. All right. So, as I said, one point three million juniors took this test. About sixteen thousand of those students were notified that they were going to become semifinalists, and then, I don't know exactly what happens between September and now, but according to the statistics shared with us, about fifteen thousand have now been honored as National Merit Finalists, which means these students rank in the top one percent of students, high school seniors, in the country. So, congratulations to these amazing academic accomplishments. We will honor this group one more time at their senior awards night as well, because it's a big deal. So, at this time, Mr. Baker's gonna take a quick photo. Parents of our National Merit Finalists, if you'd like to come up, and when Mr. Baker is done, feel free to take your photos. We got one more active camera here. All right. Congratulations again. All right. Quick question. Are any of the staff members from the Scaldic magazine with us tonight? Excellent. Great. Just wanna make sure before we get started. All right. So, National Merit, you can be seated. Thank you. Next up, Geneva High School has a literary magazine, and that magazine is titled The Scaldic. And the Scaldic, the two thousand and twenty-four Scaldic Literary Magazine earned two outstanding honors. First, it received All-American status from the National Scholastic Press Association, and it also received from the National Council of Teachers of English a first-class distinction, which puts it as one of the top seven magazines in the state of Illinois. And we have with us tonight some of our staff members. Some of those staff members graduated. They were members of the class of two thousand and twenty-four, but the folks we have with us tonight were juniors at the time that this magazine was put together. So, for starters, if we could please congratulate Danielle Nosera. Claire Totman. Beau Church. And Cameron Wintzeninski. And it's my pleasure to introduce the Scaldic magazine sponsor, GHS English teacher, Mrs. Heather Peters. And I will add, this is, this is not unusual to have the Scaldic magazine earn an award. It is a tradition to have the Scaldic magazine earn numerous honors and awards. So, congratulations, Mr. Peters, Mrs. Peters, on the amazing awards that this magazine continues to garner year after year after year. Mr. Baker, would you do the honors? All right. Congratulations again. Next, we have some amazing artists in our midst tonight, and these students earned amazing awards from the Scholastic Art Competition that they entered their work into earlier this school year. And I'm gonna recognize these students. They either received an honorable mention in this very, very large art competition, or a Silver Key Award, or a Gold Key Award. So I'm gonna recognize them, let you know what they earned, and then I'll give you a little more background on the Scholastic Art Competition, once we get them all up in front of the room. Okay, first, congratulations to Honorable Mention Award winner Mackenzie Benedict. Earning a Silver Key, Kaitlin Cassidy. Wyatt Currie earned Honorable Mention. Also earning Honorable Mention, Ryan Fontana. Earning a Gold Key and an Honorable Mention for two separate pieces of work, Drew Hosman. Earning a Gold Key, Willow Houck. Honorable Mention winner, John Kozlowski. Honorable Mention, Von Lautenschlager. Earning a Gold Key and two Honorable Mentions, and for the Gold Key work, earning an American Vision Award nomination, which I will explain in just a moment, is Emma Nolan. A Gold Key winner, Morgan Reed. And finally, a Silver Key winner, Miles Shepherd. I don't believe the teachers were able to be here tonight, but I wanna thank GHS art teachers, Danica Fami and Mr. John Christopher. They do an outstanding job. They are just one of four, two of four, not one. They're two different people. They're two of four art teachers at Geneva High School that do a fantastic job, and they help these students with their entries. So, thank you, and congratulations to them. Quickly, just a little bit of history. The Scholastic Art Awards. You can take the picture, that's fine. You can take the picture while I brag about them. I just wanna share some history about this program. The Scholastic Art, it's actually an art and writing program, but our students, obviously, were entered in the art program. This Scholastic Art Competition was founded in nineteen twenty-three. So for more than a century, it's inspired bold ideas and creative teens throughout the country. And if you go to the web, if you Google Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, it is an amazing program. These students competed in the Chicago suburban area, region, and as I mentioned a moment ago, Emma Nolan was nominated for her work, um, what did I do with it? Oh, here we go. The American Visions Award is a prestigious honor that represents the different geographic regions of the Scholastic Awards. Jurists from each region can select up to five works to be American Vision Award nominees. So, from the Chicago area, only five pieces of work were nominated, and Emma Nolan's was, and it is going to be judged in a, in another competition in New York City, I believe, this spring. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed that perhaps Emma is going to win yet another prestigious award. So, an amazing art competition that these students have entered and been awarded for their fantastic and creative work. So, congratulations again to all of our artists. Parents, it's your turn. All right, everybody look to your left. Hold on. One more camera. Everybody look to your left. That's right. Everybody good? All right. Congratulations again. All right. Now, if we could, in order to make room for another wave of honorees, if our National Merit, our artists and our Scaldic folks could please excuse themselves, congratulations, and thank you all very much for coming. We really appreciate you coming to receive this award. All right. Here we go with round two of our GHS student recognition tonight. This next group is all athletes, and we're gonna start tonight with our boys wrestler who qualified for the IHSA Boys State Finals at the University of Illinois. Please congratulate Joe Pettit. Joe competed at the IHSA State Meet on Thursday, February twentieth, and Friday, February twenty-first, as I said, at the University of Illinois. A few highlights about Joe's season. He was the conference champ at his two hundred and eighty-five-pound weight class. He's just a little guy. He was also crowned regional champ at the St. Charles East Regional. He then went on to place third at the Conant Sectional, which qualified him for the state meet. And then, on Thursday evening, at the University of Illinois, he won his first match by pinning his opponent in less than a minute. So, congratulations to Joe Pettit. Oh, by the way, he finished the year with a record of thirty-eight and five as an individual. So, congratulations, Joe. And I wanna congratulate head coach, Mr. Tom Chernich. All right. Coach and Joe, quick photo. Wait, parents, you wanna take a picture? You good? There we go. Next, Geneva High School was very fortunate to have two girls gymnasts compete and represent Geneva High School at the IHSA State Gymnastics Meet on Friday, February twenty-first, and Saturday, February twenty-second. Congratulations to Reese Lackey. And Julia Swarczewski. So, a little bit about Julia's season. She competed at the Regional, where she finished in fourth place in the vault. That automatically qualified her for the sectional. She also was an at-large qualifier in the all-around competition, an at-large qualifier on the uneven bars, and an at-large qualifier on beam. And then, at the sectional, Julia earned fifth place in the vault, which automatically qualified her for the IHSA State Finals, which was held at Palatine High School. Congratulations on a great season, Julia. Reese Lackey, at the Regional, placed second on the vault, second on bars, third on the beam, first in the floor exercise, and was second in the all-around competition, which meant she was an automatic qualifier in all of those events to the sectional. Then, at the sectional, she was first on beam, first on floor, and third in the all-around competition, and then went on to place fourth overall in the state of Illinois on the floor exercise for the second year in a row. Congratulations to Reese and Julia on an amazing season. Thank you for representing Geneva High School so well. The girls are coached by Kim Hosman, who I don't believe is able to be with us tonight. So, here's our photo opportunity, Mr. Baker. Next dad, there we go. Finally, this is always one that I feel like I have to clarify, because although we don't have a swimming pool, we do have an amazing group of swimmers at Geneva High School. They swim for the West Chicago, Geneva, and Batavia co-op, and this year, we had three boys represent Geneva High School on that team at the IHSA State Swim Meet, which was held Friday, February twenty-eighth, and Saturday, March first, at the FMC Nautatorium in Westmont. First, congratulations to Brady Jordan. Next up, Sam Ortiz. And finally, Nathan Walkington. All right. Now I'll tell you what they accomplished in terms of getting down to that state meet. Brady and Sam and Nate were all on the two hundred medley relay team, so three-fourths of that relay coming from Geneva. Obviously, that co-op swim team suffers if we don't have Geneva guys. Let's see. Now I'm just gonna stick to what each guy did, because it doesn't line up right here. Brady was also a member of the four hundred freestyle relay, also qualified in the two hundred individual freestyle and the one hundred individual backstroke. Sam, in addition to that two hundred medley relay team, was on the two hundred freestyle relay team, the four hundred freestyle relay, and also swam the fifty individual freestyle. That's the race that I think I heard everybody telling you, you don't breathe, right? You just swim from one end to the other? No, thanks. And Nate was a member, as I said, of that two hundred medley relay team. So, I'm extremely proud of these gentlemen. They do a great job all year long. It's a lot of dedication, getting over to West Chicago High School to swim, and then back from West Chicago every night after practice, and then doing a great job of representing us. And I noticed, they didn't mess around. You guys have some very sweet jackets with already embroidered and up-to-date for two thousand and twenty-five. Well done. Only problem is, it's got a wildcat on it. But, but I know Mr. Han, if he hasn't already delivered, is already got, I know he has some swag for you as well, representing GHS, to make sure that West Chicago doesn't get all the publicity, right? Yeah. No, but we appreciate, we really, truly, all kidding aside, we appreciate the partnership that we have with West Chicago and Batavia to make that co-op possible. So, congratulations to our swimmers. And, Mr. Baker, another photo. Now, girl, guys, there's a lot of pressure. You saw how the girls posed. Let's do a good job. There we go. Everybody good? All right. Congratulations to all of our athletes. And that completes our recognition for tonight. I can tell you, I'll already be back in April, because the DECA students did amazing things this past weekend, and I'm sure there's more to come. So, thank you again for this opportunity, and thank you all for coming tonight. Okay, next, Assistant Superintendent Latham and Matt Johnson will present to the board the preliminary transportation budget for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. So, I'm here presenting, as you said, the preliminary transportation budget for July of two thousand and twenty-five to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. Our transportation team consists of Todd Latham, the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, myself as Director of Transportation, Adrian Ramirez as the Assistant Director of Business Services, Brandy Lanzaratta, the Assistant Director of Transportation, Kelly Madden, the Routing and Planning Supervisor, Kendall Callahan, our Administrative Assistant, Jeremy Beckman and Fidel Delgado as Mechanics, and Philip Carter as Extra Help. So, for the two thousand and twenty-five school year and two thousand and twenty-six staffing, our office and shop are completely staffed, so that would not change. We are, if full-staffed, would be sixty-seven drivers and eight bus monitors. We do have two different fleet plans. This would be dependent on if our state-bid buses arrive for the twenty-five school year or not. The twenty, the state-bid buses were a lower cost, so we went out for those the previous year, and they did not arrive in June, July, as anticipated, and have been pushed out several times now. I have been assured a few times now, and they are continuing with it, that it should be arriving at the, they should be completed in the end of March and arriving in April. If the state-bid buses arrive this year, our fleet will consist of twenty seventy-two-passenger propane buses, twenty-five seventy-two-passenger diesel buses, twenty thirty-passenger gas buses, four twenty-seven-passenger gas buses, nine twenty-one-passenger with lift gas buses, and four white activity buses. If the state-bid bus order does not arrive, the only thing that would change of those numbers is we would be down to fifteen thirty-passenger buses instead. numbers is, we would be down to 15 30-passenger buses instead of 20. For the preliminary budget, our revenue sources are local revenue, anticipated at $3,317,500, and state revenue of $1,250,175, with a projected total of $4,567,675. This is coming from property taxes, interest income, rider fees, bus sales, and state transportation claim reimbursements. Our projected salaries and benefits are at $2,996,925. This would be compensation for our office staff, drivers, monitors, mechanics, and then benefits such as pension, dental, and life for our office staff and mechanics. The professional services projected total is $225,550. This is for staff training, professional fees, software, and bus repairs. The projected supplies and materials total is $372,825. This is for copier paper, office supplies, fuel, bus parts, and utilities. Our projected total for capital purchases is $1,400,100. This is for bus purchases in support of our fleet management plan. Our projected total for other services is $8,000. Our contingency fund is anticipated at $40,000, and non-capital purchases projected at $10,000 for a total of $58,000. This is for stuff like tools, shop equipment, technology, or contingency fund in case we have a major breakdown, such as an engine or transmission. This is the five-year comparison, is how we've been doing. We had the highest in '23-'24, total revenue of $5,197,647, and we have been steadily decreasing with that revenue, along with our, as you can see in the expenditures, they have been going down each year as well.
Great question for you.
Yeah.
If you look at your capital needs, that's where the new buses are. And if we look at the '24-'25 with the budget, if they don't arrive, I guess it's five buses, that'll just be shifted into the '25-'26 year at that point?
That is correct.
And this will go down in this year? Do we have any in the local projected sales of existing buses once those come in? Or is that all for next year, to move, you know, to get rid of some of the older buses?
We have already been reaching out to other districts and companies that are interested in our older buses, so we do have a plan to sell off older buses as we get our new ones in.
So, if we, do we need to have these new buses come in in order to be able to service all the students? Or are we, if we don't get it, we just hold on to the old buses until they do come in?
We would hold on to the old buses as we come in. This is replacing older fleets, older buses that have either been having more problems than others, or higher, are higher-mileage buses.
Is it a one-for-one swap-out?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, all of these comparisons, they go through our, these are our compensation for agreements, benefits based on current elections and market costs, purchase services estimates and reduction, a reduction in external services, supplies, materials, and reduced costs for fuel, utilities, and bus parts. Capital includes funds for new bus purchases. Other objects includes compliance, testing, and capital projects, and subject to change based on construction schedule, contingency added for large-cost part failure, and non-capital budgets reduced for tools and equipment. Any questions or comments? Yes?
The question is, is there a threshold for mileage where you say, once they reach X,000, 100,000, I don't know, is there a threshold, a rubric or anything you have to determine that it's time to move another bus on?
We don't use the mileage per se. We're trying to get the buses on a five-year plan, and so generally, we replace the ones out that are the higher mileage. But I work with the mechanics and talk to them, and we figure out which ones are the most problematic, have been breaking down the most. And if the buses have been breaking down more, we'll take those out of service before we take one of the higher-mileage buses.
Okay, so, when you say breakdown, is that, the new buses, are you making choices where those buses may have more longevity, so we don't have to go through a cycle like that over and over?
Absolutely.
So, what's the plan? But then, how do you do that? To know that, okay, we're not going to get this type of bus because it's problematic? What's the source of getting some that are more reliable? I don't want to use the reliable, but what's, I'm just trying to understand. That decision, yeah.
So, the problematic buses, we are getting rid of... Sorry, I lost my train of thought there. Sorry about that.
So, Dr. Hooks, one of the things that we do is that when we decide to retire a bus out of our fleet, we typically look at not only just the mileage, but how many times it's broken down, or just some overall issues with the particular bus itself. So, if it has higher maintenance, or a large demand from care from our mechanics, then we'll flag that as a bus that will move out of the fleet sooner than later. So, it could have low mileage, but it might have more issues with that bus that doesn't perform up to what we would consider standard. So, we'll prepare that for sale, and then we'll move it out of our fleet.
So, I suppose, my question was more of, if those buses are problematic, how do you know you're not going to get new buses that have the same problem? Are you getting a different make or model? How does that work?
Well, we have them by different fuel types and different models and providers, so we don't always buy the same bus. So, it's not so much that the buses that we buy are problematic, it's just like any car. Sometimes you buy a car that maybe has more breakdowns than another. Doesn't mean that it's a bad product, it just means that that's not up to maybe the best manufacturing. So, we use different fuel types, we use different buses, they all come in and we inspect them, and then we move all the equipment from one particular older bus to a newer bus, such as cameras, or the safety issues that we have, and then we prepare those to be surplused.
I think, I think this might also be helpful to know. So, you, as you heard Matt share, we're trying to get on this kind of five-year renewal cycle, right? And we used to be on a much shorter renewal cycle when...
Two-year.
Two-year, when we could sell those back much more easily. So, we're trying to get on this five-year cycle. The, the challenge with that has been the supply chain, and so, you know, COVID did a number on all that. So, right now, we have many, not many, several buses in our fleet that are older than that five-year cycle. So, I think one of the ways that we get to what you're getting at is when we, you know, really implement completely the fleet management plan that Todd's come and talked to you about before. We're minimizing that by making sure we're replacing everything on a five-year cycle, so we don't have buses that are outside that window. The reason we picked that window is to try to avoid some of those bigger expenses, if that makes sense.
And we also keep some of our buses in reserve, so if we do have a bus that breaks down, we automatically have one on our transportation yard that we'll replace it with, and then bring that bus back in for review and maintenance.
Thank you, that makes more sense. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right, and then, last but not least, we were able to file with the Illinois Propane Association for a rebate on our propane purchases this year, and we got a rebate of $10,000 for our fueling station construction, and $60,000 for the purchases of our propane buses, for a total of $70,000 rebate this year.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the report. I think you can all see that even something so apparently simple as a school bus involves a lot of thought and careful consideration of cost. And I'd like to add that I hope whoever's going to buy our used buses doesn't listen to this meeting.
No, they all have to go through safety line, which is a safety review, and we don't sell any bus unless it's up to the full standards.
Just the facts, right?
All right. So, item three, you guys are looking like you're ready to set, to talk. Item three is Panorama Pilot, near and dear to my heart.
Well, Ann and George are getting ready here. I just, I guess I would just say, I know, to the board and to our community attendees, we've got a lot of important topics tonight, long meeting tonight. This is, you know, March is one of these meetings where we have, or months where we have one meeting. So, you know, sometimes there's going to be more, more agenda items, but a lot of good things to get through. So, looks like Ann and George are getting ready. They're going to tell us a little bit about a platform that some of our schools have been piloting to help give us better insights into how kids are performing and what we can do to support them.
Good evening. It's good to see all of you. Tonight, George and I are presenting on Panorama Student Success, which is a platform and initiative related to problem-solving and providing supports to students across all tiers. So, Panorama is a systemic cohesive approach to looking at our data and looking and determining how we are going to support each and every child as the whole child, from their social, emotional needs, to their academic, to their functional. It is a comprehensive platform that staff can use to look at where students may be struggling and how we can best support them, and it integrates our data from various sources so that we can look at a holistic view of student performance. So, there's three things that we're going to talk about tonight. One is data integration, one is the user-friendly interface, and the other is actionable insights. It is important to recognize that for this, we've had four pilot schools that have piloted Panorama Student Success this year, and those are the schools listed up here on the slide. So, we did two elementary schools and then both of our middle schools for this year because we wanted to start off small and see how this went. And at those, oops, sorry, go back. There we go. At those buildings, we identified core teams from each building, and the core team was made up of our administrators and our problem-solving team members, which consist of psychologists, student support specialists, counselors, reading specialist, and those groups got together, and they were the first ones to participate in professional development and coaching around this system. So, really what this is, it's a system, it's a data system, but it's also a system of how we operate in the building. So, how do we run problem-solving meetings? What data do we look at? What things do we consider? So, Panorama's not just a data platform, which I will show you it in a minute, it's a whole way of doing business to support students, whether they're at a tier-one level or they need higher levels of support going up to special education. And when I talk about support, what interventions need to be put in place, right? Reading interventions, math interventions, behavioral interventions, things to support them socially, emotionally. So, the Panorama, this is a framework on kind of where you are with your development in the platform. Our goal is, as a whole district, to get over to Phase Three. So, this identifies four key areas where we are starting in this journey. So, really looking at, how many domains are we looking at for our students? So, they're maybe performing poorly academically, what's their attendance look like? Are they here to learn? What's their social-emotional standing look like? If they have poor attendance and they're getting good grades, what does their state assessments look like? So, really being able to look at that whole picture of the child is so important. We also have, many of us are now in Phase Two because we are ready to adopt this fully on for next year, and those would be our four pilot schools. Some, our other schools are more, are, we're at Phase One, and we're really thinking through, what are our problem-solving processes at these buildings, and what data are we using to support our overall student population and learning and meeting their goals? And that includes school-based practices, and then our district leadership investment as well. So, all of the leaders involved in this are fully invested, however, we haven't brought on those other four schools to move farther over on this continuum. I think George is going to show you how it works, so it'll help you understand this better. Well, I will say, I don't think George is going to show you how it works. George is going to show you how it works, so you can better understand this.
Well, I'll try my best, thank you, Ann. So, the first part of this is data integration, and anytime we add any type of platform or new product that we're looking at as a team, we always try to look at this through the lens of the teacher or the administrator, or that, that team that's sitting around the table. Is this product going to provide us with the information that we need, the data that we need to support our students? And so, when we look at data integration, imagine a table of teachers and administrators and student services members sitting around a table, problem-solving, and trying to identify students that need support. There are multiple things that we sit around the table and we look at first. One of those is our MAP scores at the elementary level, or AIMS Web at the primary level, and this is where our conversations begin. And as we sit around the table, oftentimes, more questions come up. So, if we find a student that's struggling in, in let's say, MAP and reading, or oral reading fluency in AIMS Web, or math, there are more questions that say, well, how, how 's the student performing on their state assessments? What does their attendance look like? And previously, what we would do is bounce between platforms. We'd log off the MAP platform and log into the IAR platform, or we would access a spreadsheet that our awesome technology department put together, and we'd cross-reference with a, with a spreadsheet that they gave. Or, we'd log on to eSchool to see what their attendance looks like. So, in a five, 10-minute conversation, we are accessing multiple platforms to get the information that we need to help us make the best decision for that student. So, Panorama helps synthesize all of this information, and we can do this. I have to give props to our technology department, Michael Wilks, Kathy McKee, for taking all of the data and really, I mean, essentially working magic in bringing, bringing it together. Sorry, a minute, there we go. So, I mentioned IAR is an area, and then eSchool Plus is a place that Panorama will pull data from to synthesize this information for our teams. And so, the interface is what we'll get to next. We can look at data from multiple perspectives. So, we can combine all of this data, as Ann had mentioned earlier, to see if we have a student that's struggling in reading, but they're also struggling in coming to school, their attendance is poor. Well, these are two areas that we, you know, we will certainly provide interventions necessary for that student to improve reading, but we also have to, you know, work to find a way to get them to school, because we can't learn if we're not in school. And so, these are different ways that we could look at this data, and the way that Panorama has it laid out for us is very user-friendly. We click certain things that we want to see, we could search by population if we want to look for our, only at our students with special needs, we could click and sort by that if we want to look at students that are, let's say, struggle with attendance and see how their attendance compares to their MAP scores, we could look at it that way. But multiple views, the first one is that balcony view. Principals, administrators could look at the big picture on how their school is performing. So, we have set benchmarks in place for each area, academic, attendance, and behavior. So, when we look and we see that 88% of students, for example, at Geneva Middle School North, they're meeting our targets that we have set on all the areas that we're, that we are collecting, whether that be MAP, IAR, or grades from the teacher's grade book in middle school. We could go a little bit deeper if we want to say, all right, let's take a look at students that, at the middle school, how are they performing in math only? Well, we could see here that 99% of our sixth grader, sixth grade students are performing on target at Geneva Middle School North. We could get even closer here, and we could look at a specific... School North. We could get even closer here and we could look at a specific set of students. By the way, these are all made up names. These are all Ann's family members. So, this is playground data. Need to put that out there. So, we could look at students that have, are, need support in academics. And I think the target we set here, at least getting AD or NF, at least in one, it's going to make it read. And we could see what their attendance looks like and what their behavior and referrals look like. Furthermore, we could look at, just generally speaking, eighth-grade students across the board. We could scroll and see an eighth-grade classroom just to see how are they performing in other classes? Okay, so this is nice for a teacher to see. Is this student struggling only in my class or are they struggling in other classes? Is there a pattern here that we can talk about and bring at the table? Again, all of this information, you know, previously, would require us to connect with another teacher, pull up a different report, access eSchool, log on the MAP, and come with, you know, when I was at Mill Creek, I promise you, I had a spreadsheet that had about 52 columns in there. And we'd have to scroll left and scroll right and apply all these filters, but now we have them in easy-to-view displays. But we could also get so detailed at the student level. And so, once we've identified a student here, then we could say, all right, now we can, in the upper right here, we could create an intervention plan. Okay? And so, this is where Ann can take it, you know, what happens at this. Because once we've identified an intervention plan, that's where we begin the progress monitoring and really keeping a close eye and asking the very important question is, what we are doing working?
So, when we get to this level, like George said, of the problem-solving team, and we decide that a student does need an intervention, so a service outside of the general education classroom or a service within the general education classroom to support them in making progress, we would easily create an intervention plan within the Panorama system. So, right now, again, we're creating intervention plans in a separate system. So, we're going to get data in one system or multiple systems. We're creating intervention plans in a separate system. Those intervention plans and all that data doesn't always carry over with the student when they go on to the next grade level, the next school, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is nice because all of our students will be in this platform and we'll be able to pull up any student or any building. So, when we think about intervention planning, we look at the trends and we identify specific areas to support the student in. So, some students may need an intervention in reading, and we would provide them with perhaps Lexia or Spire or a reading intervention. Some students may need interventions in social-emotional learning or, like we said, attendance. And sometimes, we don't have a boxed intervention, right? Reading interventions are pretty, you know, we have a variety of reading interventions. We have a variety of math interventions, those academic. But sometimes, we struggle to identify, what are we going to do to teach the kid to make this area better? And so, what's nice about Panorama is it has over 700 research-based strategies that we can implement to support a student in a variety of areas. So, for example, if I was looking at this, I would select my intervention type. I would identify the goal for that intervention and how often we're going to progress monitor that intervention. So, think about it from like a goal for, you know, yourself. So, if my goal is to eat healthier and I'm going to eat, you know, of this many servings of fruits and vegetables and this many servings of meat, I'm monitoring myself as I'm, I'm setting that goal, but how am I going to make sure that I do it? Well, I'm going to take steps to fill my refrigerator with healthy food, take out all my unhealthy food. So, I have all these strategies that I'm doing. So, think about that, you know, when we're thinking about a student that may need an intervention in emotional regulation, we can easily click on social-emotional learning, specifically emotional regulation, and several strategies will come up for the teacher or the team to implement for that student to support growth in that, that area. So, this would just be a visual of kind of what those strategies look like when you click on those on the screen. And then, we would progress monitor the students. So, like I said, what is their line, their trend line going for? So, if we want them to read more words per minute, what does that trend line look like as we're implementing that intervention? So, it tracks multiple data points. So, this is an example of a second-grade student whose goal was to improve their oral reading fluency. So, you can see that we started this intervention back in October, and this is where we are now. All of the dots are their data points, and then the blue line can show their trend line as well, based on what our goal was. So, overall, the benefits are, you know, improved student outcomes, a holistic student support, and efficiency for all of our teams and our educators. And in doing really good problem-solving and, and not making sure that we're efficient in looking at our data and we're timely. So...
Yeah, and I think the, I'm going to add on to that, Ann. The efficiency here is a key thing that I think of. When we look at students that are going from second to third grade within a building, communication is easy. Our teams are right there. We meet often. But there are times when students that perhaps struggle move to the middle school. This is an anxious time for everyone, especially the student and the family. And what, what is great about Panorama is that no longer will the middle school call, I mean, of course, they're always welcome to call, but ask, hey, you know, tell me a little bit about Johnny. We're noticing that he's struggling. Can you share with us some of the interventions that they, that you've put in place? Now, Panorama has, they can go back as far as the student has been serviced and see, you know, what interventions have been in place, what things have worked, what strategies have been put in place for that student. And that communication, as they move throughout our school system, is there for, for elementary, for middle school, and eventually, high school. So, as we move on, these are the, yeah, these here are our pilot schools. And Ann kind of mentioned, this is where we are with regards to, you know, our, our pilot schools. This next year, we're going to involve a little bit more our teachers. We're going to start moving more towards phase three. But next year, our remainder four schools will start where our pilot schools started this year. So, we will be adding on Williamsburg, Heartland, Fabian, and Western Avenue. And they will start right here, right at phase one. So, the benefit of these four schools that we're adding on, they will not experience the road bumps that we, we had, you know, with the initial group that piloted. Because as you can imagine, getting this data onto Panorama so it could reflect exactly what we're looking for, it's, there's a lot of trial and error. And our pilot schools have kind of worked through that and got this to a point where it's, it's ready for the next four schools. So, I think...
Setting our cut scores, identifying our problem-solving processes, those are all part of those pilots.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. But like George said, our pilot schools, they took on the challenges and they had obviously more challenges than I think next year's pilots will have, looking, you know, determining our cut scores, looking at our problem-solving processes, thinking through, what kids do we bring to tier two? What kids do we bring to tier three? What interventions are we using? How are we tracking our intervention plans? So, we've worked out those kinks with those four schools. And I can't tell you how many times I've said to George, thank goodness, we started small because we really were able to move over in those phases and, and really have some crucial conversations around, what are we doing? And are we going to continue that? Are we going to change that? And how are we going to make this best for all our students and our teachers? I do need to give a shout out to our technology department. We have worked hand-in-hand together to get this. It's been a heavy lift. So, thank you to technology. I can say that learning and teaching, technology and student services, we have just been collaborating and working together with our school teams. And it's been, I think, a wonderful pilot. And we're looking forward to next year onboarding those four elementaries. Do you guys, do you have any questions?
I had a couple of questions. So, does this not apply to our high schoolers? It's just for elementary and middle schoolers?
So, as I say, our high school and our preschool, they will be our next considerations. Because yes, it does apply to our high school. I think we just have other things we have to consider because their, their data points are very different than an elementary and a middle school data point. Obviously, we have grades, but we're not doing the MAP at the high school, but we're doing ACT. So, I think there's just, and we have a lot of SEL. How are we capturing that? So, just some thinking.
Okay. And then, have we seen in the schools that have piloted this that we've seen that we've captured more students because we now have succinct data? And we found like, maybe there were some kids that we were missing, that now that we see it in a different way and can view it all together, that we're finding some of those kids and can help them out?
I think, I think that answer could be yes and no. I think that, I think we're...
Ann, may I?
I, I think that, I, I think it's hard to answer that question. I think we've always done a good job with our child find. I don't know that we've always thought through what the issue of the problem is and looking at the whole child. I also want to say that we want to make sure that we're basing our decisions around data, not so much feeling. And so, our last thing that we want to do is pull a child out of tier-one instruction when they may not need an intervention. So, really, or if they're at one school, if they, you know, would, if they move to the other school, would they get the same support? So, having consistency across the board.
You agree.
I would add to that, that instead of more or less, we're identifying the right students.
Okay.
And kind of aligned to what Ann was saying in terms of looking at, you know, the consistent identifiers across our district for all students.
Right. And then, each school is the same. Okay.
And I think the other big piece of this that we get to is that tier one. So, if you're noticing that, you know, several of your students are struggling in, in a certain area, that's more a tier-one issue. You have to go back to the, the general setting and be like, what's going on here? Maybe we need to put supports in for all of our students.
Right. Okay. And then, one last question. So, the interventions, who owns that? Like, is that the teacher specifically? And then, they're the ones who follow up on it? And then, what, how do we loop parents in or what is their involvement?
Yeah, sure. I, I would say that your answer is, it depends. So, tier-two interventions can begin in the classroom with a classroom teacher. Anytime we have a student that is receiving a tier-two intervention, the classroom teacher certainly would call and keep the parent in the loop on, you know, what they are seeing and what they are trying in the classroom. As soon as we move to tier three, then we're moving to a more intensive intervention. That can be a reading specialist. That could be delivered inside or outside the classroom at that point, to which, at that point, I think that specialist that would be communicating with the parent. We always say, your child will not reach tier three and the parent, you know, will be surprised at that point. You know, so there's always communication to and from. But it depends on, depends on the level of the intervention. It depends on the intensity of the intervention. The intervention can be a school psychologist, could be a, or social worker, it can be a counselor, all depending on what it needs. So, I guess it depends. Whoever is, is leading in the intervention, what does Panorama call it? It's the champion, right?
Oh, the champion is the leader.
They call it the, they call it the champion of the intervention. So, as soon as we identify a champion of the intervention, they, they would essentially take the lead in communicating.
And I think you also had a question about just general ed teachers and their access to this. So, we are onboarding our gen ed teachers for those pilot schools, starting in April. So, we just started with our core group, so they could work out the kinks. Now, we're going to put it, this in the hands of our gen ed teachers so that they can look at this. Now, they've seen it up on a screen as they're doing problem-solving meetings, but they haven't had it at their fingertips to really manipulate that data on their own yet. Just we're, that's why we're still kind of in phase one or phase two for some of those areas.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation. Very interesting how this all came together. One of the things that caught my eye is that you have access to 700-plus research-backed strategies. Is there any way that you're, for the pilots, you're limiting or you're coming up with your own list of maybe some ones that are, that maybe we should try first before we look at these other ones? Or I'm just curious how you're going through all those.
Well, that is a goal, to create our own district lists that are kind of our top strategies. That is not where we're at now. We actually just started dabbling in those strategies within our last coaching visit, which was maybe January. But again, we can also create district intervention banks, so we can fill those in as well.
Yep. Dr. Hope?
Yeah, just a small question. So, I, I think you introduced it in another meeting, but it's fascinating what you have going here. So, does this, or maybe I should frame it differently. Is there anything on the horizon that this might be applicable to generative AI? I mean, in terms of your decision, decision-making, I'm sorry. Is that something that it may have capability three years from now for you? I don't know. I'm just...
Yes. I mean, I'm part of the Panorama newsletters and user groups, and I know that AI is a topic in that. And I think that they're probably interfacing with some AI to get some of our strategies through the system.
Yeah, because generative AI, which is not just your generic AI, would help you, will help a lot of us actually, with that problem-solving, time-saving, but not necessarily making decisions for you as a educator.
Correct.
One other thing, as I, I can say, this manifestly much different from punishment and reward. I can see that these interventions seem to have a lot more, as you say, holistic. It's not a binary proposition. So, that's very good. Thank you for this presentation.
Yeah, just a couple of questions because this is the first time I've heard of Panorama. So, just, I'm trying to still get my head around this. This is a system that will incorporate the data for all students in, in elementary and for right now, middle school. But it'll be used primarily to focus on students who need extra support that may be struggling. Is that, am I, am I understanding this correctly?
Yes. Yes. That is absolutely a simple, yeah, overview of it.
I'm still at the simple stage, okay?
Yes, yes.
All right. So, a couple of questions then with this. You have these dashboards that you showed and could be used. Will they be shared with the parents to help them understand where their child may be struggling or what you think may be a primary driver of, of a problem or something like this? I mean, is this a, is this a tool that's going to be used not only internally but also externally with the parents in discussing this and moving forward?
Yes. So, all of this data is shared with the parents now, but they get multiple reports.
Yep.
So, they'll get like their MAP report, their IAR. So, this will be able to, if the parent wishes, they can see like a whole printout of their whole child and identify. It, it's really pretty cool. I can't pull it up because it has student identifying information.
Sure.
But if you click on a student name, it'll show everything related to that child. So, you know, their IEP status, their 504 status, their ELL status, their grade level, their progress in math, their progress in reading. It'll show their attendance by day for the entire school year. And you can look and be like, well, why are they missing every Friday? Or, what's going on on Wednesdays? Because they seem to miss Wednesdays. What, what don't they like in their day? So, it's very helpful.
Okay. So, now, I'm going to switch my question a little bit.
I would add to that, Paul, that you can also print out reports that show how they're, you know, progressing towards, you know, the goals that have been set and the interventions that have been put in place. So, they can see their child's progress over time as well.
So, now, I'm going to switch my thought process a little bit. See, he's not here. IT, is this a set on the existing SIS system? Ah, he's, there he is, standing in the corner. Okay. Is this a set, is this easily set on? I mean, since we were able to use it? Or is this a, a significant rollout with the current SIS? And then, if that's the case, a significant rollout, since we're switching SISs in a year and a half, is, does it make sense to do it now or wait till we have the second SIS system? And so, you don't have to go through this all twice?
We've talked about these, we've asked ourselves these same questions.
I assume you did have, yeah.
Yeah. We, and Mike has a microphone. I'll let him...
There's a handheld right there, Mike, if you want to pick it up.
Oh, we're doing... Oh, we're doing up?
No.
Mike, sitting right next to Tammy, is a handheld.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, no, absolutely. The work to do the integration, it's really about getting the data in the format that that platform requires, like we would with any third-party tool. This would not be the only platform that we're going to have to really kind of reshape a lot of the integrations we have. So does this add any more significant work on top of what we'd be doing for any other third-party? I would say no. So it's, you know, it doesn't matter if we're doing it now or down the road.
Okay. I'll have more questions on the SIS later for you.
And that is a, you know, we had to think about to, like, roll out in PD, and thinking about like, well, when we're looking at an SIS system, all of the, everyone across the district is going to have to be thinking, learning about that new SIS system, not this coming school year, but the next. So what makes sense in rollout so that everyone isn't, we don't have competing interest with our new initiatives? Yeah.
I just wanted to ask one quick question, I know for time's sake, but first of all, thank you. I think this is very interesting to learn about. I was just curious, just off, you know, off the top of your head, have you heard comments from the core teams? Positive feedback, any negative, or, you know, areas that's frustrating, or that they're not, you know, not working well? I'm just curious what the on-the-ground feedback is.
Yeah, I think the great thing about the feedback, it's elicited some great conversations about practices, you know, district-wide, in the students that were identified, how we are identifying students across the district. We knew at the beginning, you know, those road bumps were real. You know, the data that we were looking at was not really matching with what we, the data that was, you know, on Panorama was not really matching with what we were looking at. So lots of tweaks along the way with our tech department. But once all of those got ironed out, and, you know, our assistant principals and school psychologists and reading specialists and principals around the district were able to select and click and view, I mean, it's been very positive feedback. And they, this last winter data meetings, they had this just kind of playing in the background, kind of bouncing between the two, and they found that, you know, I would say that they, they use this as a guide. And I think that's exactly what we want, and what we hope that our teachers and teams are using it for. So, so far, positive, positive feedback.
Any other questions?
I just have one more, I guess, follow-up on what, on, on what Paul, a question that he had, but also, thanks for the presentation. I love the idea of a, kind of a singular place where all the data that we have from all these different sources comes into one place, where it's easy to, to not only capture, but also to, to make decisions based on the data that we, we get in. So that's great. I guess, two questions. Number one is on the integration, or the plans, or, and a lot of it might be new to a lot of the parents. So following up on Paul's questions, do the plans then get rolled out for the parents? And are there options maybe for the parents to, for the parents to, or to go through with the educator, or is it, here's what we think that we should do for your student? How does, how does the rollout of the intervention happen for parents?
Yeah, the interventions include the parent. The parents are part of the team. So, you know, the Panorama does, in my opinion, there's a couple of things. Number one, it identifies the students that we are looking to support. And second is that, that intervention piece that comes after that. So once we identify the students, create the intervention, all of this information can be shared with, with parents. Here's how we, here's how we identified where the support is needed. Here are some goals and interventions that we have in place. And over time, as we, you know, Anne shared the trend line, we start collecting those data points that are also shared with, with parents. So when we meet with parents, and we try to meet with them, you know, at least, you know, once a year, oftentimes more than that, where we could present, you know, how their child was doing, and not only just tell them, but show them.
Nice. Okay, good. And then, so my second question, since this is a pilot, is, I'm guessing there's a timeframe for the pilot to, to happen, and then after the pilot's decision on, are we going to continue with this, or are we going to not? So what does that timeline like, look like?
Yeah, I think it's, it's now. We're moving to the second stage with our first four schools, and we're going to start our, our next schools, next school year, this April, I guess. And so I think we're moving on full implementation after that, so...
Okay, so the pilot for the first four schools that, that we had here was, is over then? Now we're moving into full, and then pilot again for the next four?
Right. And, and the pilot for the first four, the work still isn't done. They're still going to have coaching and PD around that to get fully over to that, that third stage of implementation. Another thing that is very important is, we have a trainer-coach that comes and works directly with our teams. Her name is Marissa, and she helps teams think through this data. So, yeah, it's really interesting, you know? Your attendance may be low for this grade level. What does that tell you? What are some things we could do? Is it having an impact on student learning? What does the overall, so it's not just like at that individual level, but really thinking from a building level all the way to a grade level of how we can make better outcomes for groups of kids. So obviously, the individual level, right, is, is the most intricate level, but the big picture piece of this is huge as well, to being able to identify, like, what do we need to work on as a district, as a building, by a grade level?
That's great. I didn't realize there was a coach or, yeah.
Yeah, we have a coach, and she, her name's Marissa. I'll give her a shout-out. She was a principal, and so she has a really good insight on just working through MTSS systems and providing support.
And because she's probably seen data from other school districts as well.
Yep.
That, that helps to, good, great, thank you.
Sure, yeah, she's been great.
Anybody else? Thank you very much for that substantial presentation. I sincerely hope that it lives up to its early promise.
We're very excited to show you the data as we go on and keep you up to date. So thank you for taking the time. I know it's a long board meeting.
Thank you.
But at least it stayed light out for an extra hour, even if we're all rubbing our eyes.
All right, the next item is public comment, and we actually do have public content. Mr. Brian Mahir is here to discuss the TIF, I believe.
Good evening, everyone. It's really something to see those students that were here, and to realize that Geneva is still putting out wonderful students, just as they did with our daughter back in the day. So that, that was really nice to see. I'm glad we were here for that. So, so thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. In the packet that my daughter has handed out, there's an article referring District 202's actions against Sugar Grove and the Crown TIF development, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. There's also other supporting documentation in there as well. TIF 4 in Geneva has many of the same discrepancies, as well as other issues, as this Crown development FOIA requests indicate no records exist pertaining to results cited in the studies, just as in the Crown development, and as you'll see in that attorney's letter. Many times, it appears that SB Friedman is the common denominator in these developments, the developments, not just these two, actually more statewide, quite frankly. It's my opinion, and this is shared by many, including legislators that I've spoken with, that they work backwards from the preferred result, which is a finding of blight. There's no evidence that this area is blighted, in the sense of what the act is meant to improve. There's no flooding on this land that has been farmed continuously for over 100 years. Understand that the methodology that they used in TIF 4 could be applied to any farmland in the county. Until this, I'm going to use this word, made me, I thought twice about it, but until this grift is called out, I guess I really can't blame a developer for taking advantage of the statute as written. Unfortunately, they're also taking advantage of every taxpaying citizen. Now, here's an example of one parcel out of five showing the result of TIF 4. It's 40 acres and has an EAV of $10,000 currently. If we look at only the 23-year lifespan of a TIF, which of course could be renewed to 47, you have, your 70% of the EAV that District 304 gets would be $7,000, times the 23 years is $161,000 over that lifespan. A cursory review shows that buildings of this size planned for this TIF generally bring in two to four times that in a single year, which would be your 70% piece of that. Instead of collecting these increased revenues annually, you'll be forced possibly to raise the taxpayer's contribution to meet your future needs in this interim period until the 23 to 47 years plays out. In 2018, an 80-acre parcel in this MIF development was bought for $41,000 an acre. This is a $3.3 million investment for one of the parcels, and it seems to run counter to me of the but-for requirement of a TIF. Would they have invested 3 million, over $3 million unless they knew what the results were going to be in advance about this TIF? And this is true for each of these parcels in this 280-acre development. If we consider the three previous TIFs that the city of Geneva has used, they're dwarfed by this $185 million investment, and that's the projected value of TIF 4. That's not counting potential interest costs, which you can't lock in, because this is a pay-go system that they're using for this. School districts have the most to lose with any TIF district. It is the school districts, the rate that will fund the TIF district and pay for the budgeted improvements. It is incumbent on school districts to conduct careful, independent due diligence evaluating these proposals for the establishment of a TIF district. Districts need to examine the factors that the municipality is relying on for eligibility. Take a careful look at the TIF map, ensure that all taxing districts have been included in the JRB. TIF districts can last for up to 47 years, as I had mentioned. That's a long time to live with an incentive that perhaps has not met statutory requirements, or was not necessary to incentivize development. The developer, previously known as MIF, Midwest Industrial Funds, has already proved they're not responsive to the community by destroying a portion of pre-settlement oak grove, and a pre-settlement oak grove with trees hundreds of years old. It would be wonderful if District 304 followed their fiduciary duties to the taxpayers and took the effort to examine this huge potential impact of these questionable activities relating to the TIF as your peers in District 3 or 302 are doing. And I ask that this be put on the agenda for your next meeting for discussion. The taxpayers in the district deserve your attention to this matter, and I thank you.
Thank you very much for that interesting comment. Any other public comment? Jackie, not much legislative activity these days.
Yeah, I don't have much of a report tonight. I know we're, got a long meeting, so I'll just keep it brief. We've had, there's action going on in the Illinois General Assembly, but not a lot of motion on some of these bills. I talked to a couple legislators in the last couple weeks, and they've said the same thing. So nothing really to update you on tonight.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report is next.
Thanks, Larry. Yeah, a few things to, to highlight. Again, I know we've got a long meeting tonight, but some important things to chat about here. And one, I just want to, it's like, the first topic here is just a little bit of a preview that we'll have time to discuss in greater detail at a future meeting. But we've been talking about this and preparing for this a lot, so I wanted to get, do a little, I guess, foreshadowing, you know, for the board and the community on this. So, you know, as you know, we started the year with our, our demographic study, and have been working through this facility capacity analysis, because we want to, you know, look at both of those two things together, as we were looking at our strategic plan and that, you know, first goal of, you know, processing through our enrollment and rightsizing our district and everything like that. So, you know, we've gotten a preliminary look at the facility capacity analysis, and today I just want to talk a little bit about the process, both for, you know, for gathering data, and then the big ideas, both about the process and about kind of preliminary understanding of some of the findings that we got there. So the first thing to note is that, obviously, figuring out what the capacity for all these facilities are in our district, there's a lot of variables, a lot of nuances, and a lot of interesting assumptions we have to make, right? This isn't as easy as just, you know, doing a simple calculation and saying, this is how many kids we can fit. So there's, there's not necessarily one right answer in any of this. There's a lot of analysis and thinking that has to go on. So, you know, given that, these are kind of the big questions that we want to be thinking about when we're looking at, you know, the results from this analysis, and when we're thinking about what we want to know here. You, you've heard us use these terms before. We need a system that is reasonable, equitable, and sustainable. We've talked about that when we're looking at our class sizes in the district, and when we're looking at our enrollment, and all of that across the district. That's the criteria that we're building this on. So one of the key questions here is, how close are our learning spaces to achieving our district class size targets? So I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. What is a reasonable expectation for maximizing our scheduling efficiency? And how can we ensure consistent and equitable experiences, you know, for kids all across our district? So those are kind of the big ideas we're trying to get at here. So in terms of the process, you know, we worked with our architect, all of our administrators were involved in helping share data. We got all this data about enrollment, identified, went room, went through room by room, how each space in our district is currently used, to, you know, looked at our schedule, did all of this, and generated a whole lot of data, which really gave us then the opportunity, with the help of our architects, three different calculation models. The maximum operational capacity, which is basically saying, what is our capacity based on how we think it would be best to use our buildings, how we're using our buildings right now? The designed operational capacity, which would be, what were our buildings designed to hold? And as you've heard me share before, many of our, actually all of our buildings, we use them very differently than when they were designed, right? We have a lot more unique supports, like you heard about Anne and George talking about. We have a lot more unique programming that you've heard about. We have, we have our friends from GELP here, right? We have full-day kindergarten, all sorts of things we didn't have before. So that designed operational capacity, you know, that's what that calculation would be. And then there's the state ISBE capacity, which would just say, they say, what's your square footage? Here's how many kids you can hold. So obviously, this is where we're trying to get that nuanced lens and look at what's our maximum operational capacity. So there's a few key figures that we want to start looking at when we do that. The first is, what is our number of learning spaces? And then, what is the number of students in our learning spaces? And as we start to look at that, you know, one of the pieces of data that we're trying to look at, and you all have heard us talk about this over the year, over the last year and a half, what are our ideal class size targets at all of our grades across the district, right? So when we're looking at these two numbers, the number of our learning spaces and the number of students in our learning spaces, we're using these numbers over in Exhibit A to help us start thinking about that, if that makes sense, right? So if we're looking at a kindergarten classroom, we're looking at, okay, how many kids could all of our kindergarten classrooms hold if we had 21 kids in each of those kindergarten classes, right? How many, how many kids could our eighth-grade classrooms hold if we had 24 kids in each of those classes, et cetera, right? So that is an idea of how we're starting to look at that data. Now here's what's important, this next bullet point. Our maximum operational capacity assumes... Our maximum operational capacity assumes a hundred percent efficiency in achieving all of those class-size learning targets in all learning spaces. Now that's impossible, right? There's no way a school district could ever ensure that every kindergarten classroom is gonna have exactly this many kids, for example, right? Does that make sense? And it's also undesirable, because even though, you know, these are some targets that we've set and we've worked together with our teachers to, to figure those out and everything. It is inevitable that some things aren't gonna match that, right? You, you're gonna have, for example, calculus B.C. With the size of our enrollment, you're not gonna have twenty-five kids to enroll in that class, for example, right? So not only is it impossible, it's also undesirable, because some classes, you know, you're not gonna put more kids in ceramics than you really have the, the space for, for example, right? So it is important to note that, but nonetheless, the data really provides foundation for us to start ass, asking about those key questions. So, you know, given that, what are the big ideas that we kind of have so far? The first, that is great, we have sustainable room for growth, consistent with the needs outlined in our demographic study. So we've talked about our demographic study, we've seen that there's gonna be a little dip in our enrollment, and then, you know, presuming no significant demographic changes in the community, you know, an increase a little bit, and we have, we have capacity to sustain that. Two, we have the opportunity to maintain our reasonable class sizes across the district, so I think that's really great news, too. And then three, there is room for improved efficiency and consistency across our elementary buildings, right? I don't think that's a surprise. It's something we've talked about as we've been talking about our demographic study for the last year and a half. But there is room for some of that improved efficiency and consistency across our elementary buildings. So, that's like the foreshadowing for now. We'll, we'll be coming back, you know, to share kind of more information and more data with you, but I wanted to get you thinking about those big ideas a little bit.
Your first idea, your, the sustainable room for growth, consistent with the needs in our... I'm still, I'm a little bit struggling with that comment, because the demographic study today doesn't show a need for growth. So are you talking about functional growth, not student growth in terms of number of students?
Yeah, great question. So I'm talking about both those things. One is functional growth in terms of, that's not a term I would've used, but that's a good one, yeah. You know, as our pro-
You can use it.
Yeah, thanks. Hang on. Functional growth, Paul. You know, our programs are going to continue to evolve that way, right? So we, we know we have more, you know, special education courses and programs than we've had before. That's likely to continue to evolve, right? So we've got an opportunity to do that successfully and without needing to worry, I guess, is the point. Because I think one of the things that could have happened, or that could happen in a district that does, does something like this. You could say, mm, we're kinda tapped out, we're kinda tapped out. And so I think the, the meta-message here is, we're not tapped out, you know, we're, we're okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I just didn't wanna send the wrong message, that we're expecting significant growth-
No, correct.
The number of students over the next ten or seven years.
Yeah.
You know, if, if something happens out west, sure.
Correct.
But it's more functionality.
Yes, and when we, you know, again, when we come back, we'll share some of that demographic study data again. Good? Okay, next, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Fox Valley Career Center. I had an opportunity to, to sit at the Advisory Board for the Career Center this last week, and I just thought it would be appropriate to take a minute to talk about it, given, you know, that this is some amazing programming for our kids, and given that this is so well-aligned with our strategic plan, right? You know, we're looking at clear career and college pathways, and we're talking about evaluating the exposure that we're giving kids, what kind of programming we have. And what happens for our kids at the Fox Valley Career Center is really awesome. So as they're, you know, we have courses over there, there's welding, there's fire science, there's healthcare courses, there's law enforcement, there's electrical, there's automotive. And these are programs, many of which, but, you know, none of the districts in this cooperative could, could hold on their own, right? But because we get together and partner with them, we can offer some of these opportunities for kids. So as we're looking at next year and as the staff over there is looking at next year, as, as usual, there's strong early interest. Many kids across, you know, the whole area are interested. And of course, there's also limited capacity, right? You can only accommodate so many kids in a welding program. So there's that limited capacity, and there's also limited opportunity for kids, because I think, as you've heard us talk about before, while it's a great resource, also getting out and back can have implications for a kid's schedule. So that strong early into, interest sometimes wanes as kids have to look at their schedule and see what they can really prioritize. But there, there, there's that strong interest, the Career Center staff is working to get kids, you know, look at what their schedule will look like next year, and also look for staffing. As you can imagine, some of these roles there are very, very difficult to fill. They're, they're currently looking for a new teacher for fire science, and I think Mr. Burchill's been standing with a sandwich board out on Canville Road looking. You know, he, he's trying to find somebody to, to take over for that. So it is hard to fill some of these roles. And then last, I just wanna thank Rick, he's leaving, he's retiring, he's done a great job running that program, and there's a new director coming in. Bob Gosic, and met him this last week, and I think he's excited to pick up where, you know, Rick has taken it to a great place and, and really propel things even further, so good stuff happening there.
Yeah, sorry for another comment.
That's okay.
But if you go back to that last one, your third bullet, strong interest, limited capacity, and you, this is nothing new.
No, correct.
The waning, a lot of people were interested, no, I, I wasn't, didn't realize about the limited capacity, but it's the issue of, of how to organize it and how to get the kids there, students there and, and back. We can't be the only school that's having, district that's having this problem.
Oh, no.
The other people that are, so if, if we don't do something different, five years from now, we're gonna be sitting here saying the exact same thing.
Correct.
And there are gonna be kids that, sorry, students, that would've really liked to have gone into some of the trade or other opportunities here that are not gonna get to. So I think, I think somehow we need to put some focus on this in, in the district, because this is not new. This has been around for a long, this problem's been around for a long time.
Correct.
And we haven't cracked that yet.
No.
And we need to.
Yeah, and that's why we're talking about it here today, so, and that's why it's part of our plan. I mean, I think one of the things that, you know, to your point, what we can start to look at is what is that? Where is the interest from Geneva, right? So what is, where is the interest from here? And what can we do to address that? We can't necessarily control what happens, you know, across the whole region, but we can at least look at what some of that interest is here, and then look at what's, I guess I would say reasonable and sustainable again. You know, go back to use those other terms. You know, it's, as an example, it's unlikely we would be able to ever build our own welding, you know, opportunity as an example. But where, where are some high-leverage places that maybe we could crack this in a different way? That's what we should be thinking.
I just would like to know if other schools have.
Yeah.
And, and can we learn from that?
Yep. Good question. Okay, then just two more quick things. One, I just wanted to, because it's, this is our only meeting in a month, and we won't be meeting again, you know, until after spring break. A lot of big things have been happening, right? We had a big professional, county-wide professional development day recently. Winter activities are wrapping up across the district and, you know, spring activities are beginning. You know, we're seeing students get engaged in a wide variety of activities. You know, you've got concerts, you've got a career day at the middle school, there was a world immersion day at a high school, there was a, a career cafe at the high school. You've got kids giving their winter performances. I mean, all these things are happening that really highlight, I think what we saw earlier. We've talked about this before, but we saw kids recognized today in completely different, you know, areas, right? Geneva's got opportunities for kids to do a lot of cool, different things that meet their interest, and that's pretty awesome. And then last, you know, our big standardized testing time is beginning, right? So at the elementary level, this week actually, the Illinois Assessment for Readiness is beginning. And at the high school, you've heard us talk about before that we shifted from SAT to ACT this year, and the ACT suite for the high school students will be getting, will be beginning in April. So, but it was important for you to be aware of that. And then last, as I'm thinking about all that, just kind of a big thank you to, to our teachers and, and all of our educators in the district, right? Looking back at board meetings over this year, you know, we're seeing great growth in student achievement. We're seeing all these strong programs and offerings. We're seeing all these cool things kids get to do. We're seeing kids develop, you know, skills that they're gonna need for life and building strong relationships and feeling connected, and that's because our teachers are awesome and they're empowered to do their jobs, right? And they're empowered to do all these things for kids, and I just thought we should acknowledge that. So that's all, Larry.
Thank you, Andy. I certainly couldn't agree more. The next item, Board Dialogue Topics and Pending Action Consideration. Item one, the Twenty-Five Twenty-Six Finance Committee Calendar Draft. And this calendar's been reviewed by the Finance Committee and the District Administrators. And approval is recommended. If you have any questions, we could look at that now, but otherwise, we've seen this before. So I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Item two is the Twenty-Five Twenty-Six Preliminary Resource Adoption Policy. And it's contained in the packet, is information about Assistant Superintendent Sims regarding textbooks and instructional materials being proposed for adoption. Approval is also recommended. Any questions or discussion? Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Tammy.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item eight, Work Study Topics and Future Action Consideration, Student Information System Recommendation. Mike Wilks will share an information about a recommendation to purchase Synergy Student Information System from Edgipoint. This will be brought back at the next meeting for possible approval.
I wondered why you were showing that out of Board Book. Sorry about that.
All good.
All right, thank you for your time this evening. We have with us presenting the recommendation for a new student information system are several folks from our review teams here. I'll have them introduce themselves when they go through their, their slide areas here. But one thing to, to talk about this evening is ultimately how we reached our recommendation. What timeline was this process, did this process take? How did we get to where we are? What were some of the drivers for considering this change? Ultimately, looking at what the recommendation is, and then talking about the benefits we anticipate to gain by making this change. So that's the structure for tonight's conversation on the Student Information System. I want to be sure to recognize all of the folks who have had a part in this process over the past two school years. It started last school year, we'll talk about that in just a minute here, with our team on the left-hand side, our core team. These are K-12 representative folks who are administrators, support staff, technology staff members, who really took the time to dig into this big question of whether or not we should be thinking about a change. And then this school year, we broadened our scope, and we brought on additional staff members from around the district to help us take a look at some focused areas within the SIS system. To really make sure that when we're considering this change, because ultimately this is a system that impacts virtually everyone in the school district, that we're capturing the right feedback to make sure that we're getting a system that's gonna help to meet our needs. And I wanna thank all of these folks who have, who have done the work, committed to the process, given us thoughtful feedback along the way. They give me confidence that we are making a good recommendation for District Three Oh Four. So here is the timeline for this decision ultimately. It started ultimately last school year where we conducted an RFI, a Request for Information, and we sent that out to four of the major SIS providers that we know are in this area, the Chicagoland area, have a good presence here. We know that there are many districts who are using these tools. And we also know that those customers who were formerly E-School Plus, they've gone to these tools over the years. Through that RFI process, the core team members, of which we have folks here today to talk with you about this, this recommendation, they considered two primary questions. Number one, after seeing all the information that came back from those products, looking at demos from those products, did we see a compelling, compelling information to consider a change in our current SIS system? And if we did, then to identify two finalists, that we would then have come back this school year and have go through a more thorough and in-depth process with the broader team. Resoundingly, that team ultimately said yes. We saw enough to say, there's a reason to consider a change. And the two finalists that we had really stood out from the other two. Two finalists were very good solutions, good customer bases, and, and, and lots of functionality to, to take a look at. So in Twenty-Four Twenty-Five, we sought volunteers earlier this year among our school community to find out who wanted to be part of the process. And that's how we wound up with the list you saw earlier. We developed an RFP and sent that to the finalists to ultimately submit proposals that describe how their solution is gonna meet our, our needs. We had the vendors come on-site for multiple days of presentations and demonstrations. We had our core team members attend all of the, the whole time, so basically four days of demonstration between the two, two vendors. And then our review teams came in for their portions. So if the topic was on attendance, the attendance team came in, or if it was on scheduling, the scheduling team came in. So we made sure that we had basically a comprehensive view along the way. We conducted customer reference calls, we reached out to districts who were using both of the products, talked with them about how they were using it, what they liked about it, what were some of their challenges. Many of the customers were E-School customers, that E-School is our current SIS system that we've had in the district since, really, its first, you know, live year was two thousand seven, two thousand eight. We did technical reviews, we had conversations about how their, their technical infrastructure worked and how we would be able to interact with that to complete things like data integrations, get insight into the information the way we need to. And, you know, both vendors were really good and responsive with, when it came to all of the feedback questions we had. I really do give both of those vendors full credit. They were professional in every way throughout the process, patient with our process, and responsive to our requests. So I wanna thank them for, for that. Lastly, we landed on the product evaluation. After we had a chance to make sure that our team felt like they had the information they needed to make a recommendation, we then worked to ultimately develop- they needed to make a recommendation, uh, we then worked to, uh, ultimately develop the recommendation you're gonna see here tonight. If we do move forward, um, then next school year would be a data conversion migration year, a lot of, uh, training on the product, um, primarily by support staff, administration, those who do scheduling, attendance, the kind of the setup, if you will, of the SIS system. We'll make sure it's configured and ready for that 26-27 school year. Uh, by and large, um, the largest group of, of our users for the SIS system in terms of, uh, staff goes, our teachers, uh, they'll primarily be introduced to the new SIS system likely at the, the start of that 26-27 school year to make sure that they're working with the current classes and students and, and set up the way that they need to, and so that the training is fresh for them to go into that school year. So that's what the timeline has looked like or, and could look like here going forward. And with this, I'll turn this over to Mr. Blue.
All right. So I was here when we first adopted E-School back in 2006. Uh, so I was part of the, the group that helped implement. And so when Mike called and said, "We wanna review whether or not we need to make a change, will you be a part of this?" And I said, "Yes," 'cause that way I could derail the change, because I'm an old dog and I've spent like eighteen, nineteen years invested in this old program, and you know, guys like Doug and I finally got good at it after a while. So like, no, I don't want change. I will come derail things. Uh, but then he, he kinda talked me into it because, uh, uh, E-School got bought out by Power School, I don't know, like maybe eight, ten years ago, something like that, and we thought we'd see some change in what E-School looked like and some more development, and we haven't really seen that. And then Mike, uh, shared with us that, well, they're only committed to E-School till 2030, like Power School is. So this change, whether we make it because we want it, might just come because they want, want it, right? So, and I always like to be in the driver's seat of change. Uh, so, uh, if it's gonna happen to me, I'm gonna help be a part of it. So I, of course, joined Mike and, and I can't wait for the meal he's gonna feed me after this late night. Um, now, being 06, it was great times back then. We were so impressed with E-School about how parents would be able to log into this thing called the Internet, uh, and they would be able to see live grades of the kids. And we were, uh, I remember being on my BlackBerry and having the calendar invite come up for this, because as you might know, the iPhone wasn't invented till 2007, and here's the thing, not much has changed in E-School since then. I mean, like, there is not great parent interface that occurs with all the modern technology we have, you know? I mean, again, resistant to change. I didn't think I got iPhone till iPhone 5, but like, you know, like, other people were like, "Come on, let's use this thing, let's use our devices more." And we haven't seen that out of, uh, E-School. So when we started to see these vendors that Mike brought in, I think a lot of us were like, "Oh, wow, okay." You don't know what you, you're missing until somebody shows up to the party and tells you, right? Uh, so that's the big thing is, the, the, our challenges of today is they're just more expected of us out of a system like this. And some of the, uh, things that, uh, some of the things that Mike has to work on in the background, the integration, and Kathy and the folks in the tech have to do, like your question about how does Panorama integrate with this, some things are easy, uh, for all systems, but like, E-School has been hard in a lot of different ways for our tech to integrate our other programs. So, uh, these more modern programs that we looked at were really things that were gonna help us move along. Um, finally, you know, again, back in 06, we were so excited because a lot of folks were also adopting E-School, and so we had a nice little user group. I knew people, Mike's, uh, old predecessor, you know, uh, prior Mike, uh, knew people. Uh, we had a network, we could call people. My mom was a Dean's secretary. She would literally call my secretaries and be like, "Hey, it's Patty. I need to talk to you about..." And they're like, "Oh, Terry's here, we'll get..." No, 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 I wanna talk E-School, and they would talk because there were enough people using it. And slowly, everybody's kind of moving away. And so if, if we don't make change, we're gonna be the ones who are like, nobody's calling. Uh, and you know, I like it when nobody rings my phone normally, but, uh, in this case, we don't have anybody call for help either. So we gotta, gotta get with the rest of the area and kind of make some change for that reason, too. Doug?
All right. Good evening. Doug Drexler representing the high school this evening. Uh, so we've actually been providing feedback on E-School for several years, uh, to Mike, uh, because of its limitations. Um, you know, one of the things that really hit home to me, we've been hiring people, teachers, counselors from other schools, that are coming in with experience using some of the other tools besides E-School. And for them, it's like coming in and hitting a brick wall. Uh, E-School is not terribly user-friendly. Uh, there's a lot of information in it, but it requires some knowledge about how to get to certain information. Uh, and when you saw the slide from Panorama earlier today, that is the exact opposite of the system we're currently using. So there's a lot of clicking, a lot of navigating to different portions, uh, of the program. Uh, as Terry alluded to, but the focus seems to be with E-School, they're on a maintenance plan, right? They're not on an innovation plan, uh, and it's, it's logical to think that they are eventually going to be sunsetting, uh, this program. So as a parent in the district myself, uh, I see what I have access to as a parent, uh, in E-School, and it's great for a 2007 standard. Um, but seeing the opportunities that are available for communication to parents in the newer products, uh, infinitely better, uh, than the kind of communication we're able to do with, uh, E-School. There's a variety of other features as well, uh, in the, the newer products, specifically with, uh, health information tracking, uh, and other information about our students. Uh, but ultimately, this last bullet point, I think, really sums it up. Our needs have evolved at a faster pace than this, than E-School has. So if we continue on the current path, we're just gonna become more and more divergent from what we have and what our needs are. Um, the analogy I would make, it's kind of like a used car, right? We're driving the 2007 E-School car, um, and it runs, it gets us to point, from point A to point B, but it lacks all of the features that have been developed in automobiles in the last two decades. Uh, and we've heard from the mechanics that they're maybe gonna stop making parts very soon. Uh, so I think, you know, having driven a few cars to the end of their lifespan, you kinda know when it's time, uh, to start shopping for a new vehicle, and that's kind of where we are with student information systems. Uh, so this next slide, uh, is kind of, uh, piggybacking on the last slide. The last slide was areas of feedback we hear. This is kind of the opposite, areas of greatest need that we want our new program, uh, to solve for us, really, uh, give us some space to grow and innovate within, uh, this technology and communicate both internally with our staff and faculty, but also externally, uh, with parents. Um, and we want teachers and counselors to have easy access to information that helps them make better decisions. So these newer solutions kind of flatten the curve of getting information about students in order to make decisions, and that's very powerful. So, uh, ultimately, it's going to make us a more efficient and effective organization for the benefit of our students, and at this point, I will turn things over to Mike.
All right. So this is the, uh, the recommendation. Ultimately, the solution that came out on top in terms of, uh, the evaluation process was a product called Synergy, uh, SIS, and it's from a company called Edgipoint. Um, the solution ultimately, uh, when it comes to our highest weighted criteria, some of the points that, uh, Doug was referencing earlier, uh, this product won or tied two-thirds of those, uh, areas. Uh, when it came to looking at holistically functional, uh, capabilities, things like the comprehensiveness of a solution, how well it scales, uh, what functionality it offers, to attendance and behavior and scheduling and, uh, grade reporting and such, um, ultimately, Synergy won 72% of those areas, uh, when our, uh, review team rated this. Um, and the areas that it won in are notable. These are things like scheduling, uh, course management, grade reporting, teacher and family functions, and these are ultimately the bread and butter of, of SIS system. This is what makes, uh, the system valuable, uh, at the end of the day. Uh, it's what we need. Um, and when we asked our team to, uh, ultimately decide, you know, if you had to pick A or B, which solution would you pick and recommend? Um, ultimately, 71% of our team, uh, said they would recommend, um, Synergy. And so, uh, this data seems clear to me that, uh, ultimately, this is the direction that makes sense from our, our team perspective, our district perspective, because it's, uh, it's addressing the areas that we believe we need to address. When it comes to the finances of the solution, uh, this is what the estimated costs are over five years. Um, and just keep in mind, right now, we're using average numbers. Um, there are detailed items that we will, um, be able to break out in more, in more depth here, uh, in the April, uh, board meeting here, but ultimately, I just use averages for this slide, and this captures the, the costs over the five-year period, basically. Year one is that 25-26 school year. This is the year of implementation. So the costs associated with year one in this, in this solution are those associated with professional services, training, the work that needs to happen to get us from our current SIS system to this solution. Um, years two through five, these are the annual ongoing expenses of the solution. And you can see I broke those down to, um, show you what the annual software, uh, subscription costs would look like, and also what the, uh, annual hardware if, or infrastructure costs would be, uh, the recommendation would be to, um, have Edgipoint ultimately host the infrastructure for the district. Um, in total, this five-year cost is just about $540,000. Um, and when you compare that to what our current solution cost is, that cost is roughly $65,000 a year. Uh, so that's $315,000 in software, subscription licenses and support. Uh, the note here is just that we host that infrastructure locally. So, um, it runs on our local data centers, so the data center cost or the infrastructure related cost that, kind of hard to break out, those are more capital expenditures. We're doing that, uh, every six, seven years as we refresh our data centers. Um, so, uh, you know, it's obviously gonna, it's cost more than $315,000 to run.
Do you have any idea what that number is, that the infrastructure cost for, for the current system?
Yeah, I, well, to do our last refresh back in 22-23, uh, the total for the data center refresh was $400,000 or thereabouts. Um, the SIS system is probably the largest portion of like, the storage needs and such of what we host in our, our local data centers. It's definitely the biggest system we host.
So it could be that just continuing the existing system would cost more than bringing in a, a newer system?
Possibly, yep.
Was, uh, was cost part of the evaluation rubric? And so how did Synergy fall into that? I'm, I'm not looking to...
Yep.
...the lowest cost or anything like that, but more, more value, but I was just more curious on how they fell into.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, price was definitely one of the, uh, factors. In fact, it was the highest weighted factor, uh, in our criteria. And what we did was we ultimately took the average of the two costs because, you know, these are, you know, different systems, hard to really kind of, kind of compare that. So typically, when we have a project like this, we'll take that average cost and then we'll figure out, uh, 15% or so of their variances. So, um, ultimately, that's how they scored. Uh, this solution, um, was, I, in total, more expensive than the other solution, but when you consider all the other factors, of functionality and such, um, this, this came out to, to be on top. Mm-hmm. All right. I'm gonna move here.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing related to cost, and, and this is just me not having knowledge or just kind of anecdotal knowledge of SIS systems. Seems like some systems have different modules or kind of like, uh, I don't know, nickel and dime, I guess is probably, I don't know if that's the right phrase in terms of these systems.
Yeah.
Is this kind of an all-in type thing, or is there other ancillary kind of things that get tacked on?
Yeah, that's a, a great question. Um, so this solution ultimately addresses, um, our core SIS system needs, um, our, basically everything we, we do today with E-School or need to be able to do beyond, you know, just a little bit beyond that. Uh, there are additional capabilities and modules that you can add to this solution. They offer, um, various modules. Both, both vendors did, uh, that type of structure. And yes, there are costs associated with those modules if you choose to, uh, adopt those.
This, this is the core things that we need, just, and then if we wanted to?
Absolutely, yes. Yep. Thanks. All right. Any other questions on finances before we go forward? Okay. All right. I'm gonna hand this over to, uh, to Tim.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Tim Wyler, Mill Creek Principal, representing the elementary, uh, buildings and staff. And, uh, I get to talk a little bit about capturing what we're most excited about in terms of the benefits that, uh, Synergy and a new platform would provide us. Um, just four of the things that kind of became the themes of what we're looking forward to is just a modern user experience. We heard the analogy of the, the buses earlier and the cars and the phone, so just having a more modern, uh, interface, um, modern capabilities and opportunities to grow. So like, working with a company that can kind of envision things in the future and anticipate those, those things that we're gonna be dealing with in a couple of years and, and having the ability to kind of pivot and grow with, with a company. Uh, the customization and adaptability, some of the things that were, uh, really good tools that they showed us during demonstrations. One was, how do you track students after you leave a building? It could be for like a field trip, could be for, um, you're re-unifying students in another building. The ability to use technology to kind of track and, um, take attendance and hold accountability of where people are at were just some of the cool features that, uh, that we were shown. And then opportunities for efficiency. One of the things that I think teachers, administrators, parents, students love is time to do what we love to do, and having a system that's way more efficient gives us time back to kind of doing the things we love. So whether it's teaching in the classroom or maybe looking at those thorough reports and digging into problem solving and interventions and enrichment, all those things kind of go hand in hand with having a system that, that, uh, meets those needs. And with those same themes, some of the team members, uh, these are, these were the ideas that kind of came to light as you, um, talked to them about what they're most excited about with a new platform. And one is, uh, Synergy has the potential to become a one-stop shop for everything we need, so one place, we can go and do everything. Uh, I love the potential opportunity to have students scan in an office, uh, using their ideas, IDs and tracking attendance, whether they come into the building late, they leave a class, they go from one place to a building to, to another, just again, more efficiency. Uh, counseling and advising, this was huge, uh, being able to see who's visited the counseling office numerous times in a week. Maybe I'm not, uh, at work that day, but Timmy comes in and he know, we know that he needs some support, so we can kind of check in with, with students that, in a report that's easily inaccessible to our fingertips. And then also just, one of the nurses, um, identified that Synergy has the ability to customize the things that we're looking for, and a lot of times, what I'm looking for isn't maybe what someone else is looking for, and you know, the customize those things are, it's really powerful tools that we can, uh, have at our fingertips. So just kind of the themes of what we're looking forward to. So, thank you.
All right. We are looking to bring this recommendation forward to the April 14th meeting, and with that, I'll turn this over for questions or comments.
Any further questions or comments? We will be discussing this across the next meeting also.
Yeah.
Hi. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Paul, you go.
So first question is, uh, if I'm gonna turn in my 19-year-old car, I don't wanna buy a 12-year-old car. How old is Synergy and how many years, how long has it been out there? And is there a chance that, that its current owner will say five years from now, "No, we're not gonna support this anymore. We want you to roll out to whatever they call the next one."
Yeah, in terms of, uh, your last question there, um, I don't have a crystal ball. I mean, anything can happen.
I understand that, but how old it, now, how old it is?
Yeah, ultimately, it's, uh, I think it's 2010 or so, thereabouts, is when the, the product really started to come on, on board. I think some of the first Illinois E-School customers we talked to were back in 2011, 12. Um, so it's one of the, you know, newer platforms, uh, that has come out on the market. Uh, don't quote me on the exact start date there.
No, no.
But, um, relatively newer platforms that are, um, that are out there. So, and you can see that come through in the design of the system. Uh, you see that in what they're offering when it comes to mobile technologies. Uh, it's very different than what we have today with, uh, E-School Plus. So, um, and their user, uh, interface, uh, they basically have thought about people and how they interact with the solution in a much, um, more modern way than we have with E-School Plus. Um, they even have a, kind of a way to do a live edit, if you will. Um, it's very much like kind of updating Excel from search results. So if you're doing a search result and you wanna just make a quick change, you can do that, uh, right from those results, that result window. that, uh, right from those results, that result window, rather than having to go back into another screen and make the change and then come back to your search results. So when it comes to some of those efficiencies that you can gain, uh, you're seeing that come through in a solution like this.
Is, is this their first version or have they rolled out two-point-O, three-point-O? Where do we, where do they stand on that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I'm not sure how they version their software, being mostly software as a service now.
Right.
I think it's mostly iterative. Um, but I don't get the sense that this is one that has been around for, uh, multiple, uh, reworks of, of their system.
Cause that's, could be a good thing. They found the bugs, they made the changes, and, and you're not working on one-point-O ten years later.
Yeah, it, it could be. Um, also, I will say, you know, as we've experienced with our current SIS system, um, when you're really fundamentally changing the technology stack that it's built on, that's a, that's a pretty big change and that can, that can take some time to roll out. So, um, some of those, uh, more mature SIS systems that have been around for a long time, uh, that, that change to modernize their interface can take significant time. We saw that on our business system and HR system, um, side, where, uh, that interface has now evolved to where we're adopting a new platform, uh, the newest platform from that vendor for this. And that took a number of years to get to a point where it was usable for us to, to adopt.
So the, the last question I have is more about strategy, um, with, with this moving forward, uh, once you implement it. Customization and ad- adaptation is all great and everybody loves that. The reality is it's the killer of all SIS systems. Because you can't, once you start adapting and once you start customizing, it makes it extremely difficult, eh, extremely expensive to move to the next version that they roll out. And we've seen this with companies like SAP and, and things like that.
Yeah.
If, if you're dealing with them. So there's this, there's a strategy, two different strategies. One, you stay with your version and you adapt the hell out of it, right? And you make it what you want it and you run that forever. The other option is you make no changes and you take it off the shelf and you continue to run it and you have add-ons that you can put.
Yeah.
But they're easily adaptable to move to the next version that comes out.
Yeah.
Have we thought of strategy, strategizing that?
Yeah, let me, uh, first, the customization, I think I'm understanding where you're, you're coming from on that question now. Um, when we talk about product customization in terms of what synergy allows to be customized, you're doing it within the parameters of the system, the way it's programmed, the way it's built. So we're not developing a custom module or, or-
Okay.
-injecting custom code into the product. We're basically customizing within the box that they allow us to do that in.
So there's a black box that you can't go in?
Ex- exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah, yep. And you're right on, uh, cause it, traditional systems, that would be exactly the risk, you know, that you're, you're taking when you start to, to develop your own branch of that, right?
Right.
Um, but this is staying on that same mainline source code and it's being updated regularly as part of that infrastructure hosting, uh, maintenance plan. Yep.
I had a question about the actual system use. Um, I know we got a lot of feedback from several different members of our staff who I trust on their expertise, but do we know what that's gonna look like on the parent and student side and how they may interface with it? Because I think sometimes we in the schools are experts on the system and then parents get to use it or students get to use it and all, half of those functions are lost because they can't or they, they can't-
Yeah.
...figure out how to navigate the system. So do we need to, whether it's the task force or some other way, or bringing to us what that actually looks like, what the functionality looks like and how that may interface with non-school experts?
Sure, yeah, I, I can certainly bring some information back to the April meeting if, uh, if, if the board wants to have that additional information. Um, I think the other thing to think about is one of the functional areas that we had was the family functions of the, the product. So we did have, um, specific dedicated time with each product to look at what those family capabilities are. And many of our reviews, uh, team members, our parents themselves, uh, in the district have had some of that experience and, and were able to give that valuable feedback as part of the process and ask the right questions of the vendor. So, um, that certainly was something that we were thinking about. It was a, an intentional group that we, we got together just to, to look at what the parent, uh, components were.
Okay. Go ahead.
So obviously, this is proprietary software and you only have, as Paul said, some limitations of what you can do or cannot do with it. Um, how confident are you that it's not gonna be obsolete within X number of years?
Uh, I'm as confident as I would be with any of the, what the current systems that we looked at. Um, they are mature in their, their usage, they're mature and, um, and what they're, they're, um, doing, sorry. I'm seeing a message on my screen, an error on this, anyway. Um, no, so basically, um, it is something that, um, I don't have any concern at this point. I'm seeing more customers move to and adopt this product, specifically those that are coming from our SIS system. We had a chance to talk with a few of those customers, um, as part of this, this process. And so, uh, at this point, I see this company continuing to, to innovate their product, continuing to invest in the product. And as we talked to those who have been on the product since twenty-twelve, those earliest Illinois customers, um, we asked them, how have you seen the product, you know, change over time? And they spoke to those changes with excitement and, um, and kind of a feeling of freshness that the product was continuing to evolve and adapt. As was noted, uh, previously, uh, we really weren't experiencing that same level of change over time. Don't get me wrong, e-school plus, you know, it may not have innovated a whole lot in this time period, but it did the bread and butter stuff really, really well, especially to the complexity that we needed as a school district. So, um, you know, I, I do want to say that, you know, that, that was a mature product that, that we've been using, um, but there's more that we can do and, and there's more we're being asked to do that we think this is the right thing to do.
Were you saying that this is, this SIS does have mobile capability? Like e-school is kind of clunky on the, on the phone and I, I know, we know, most of our students and most of our parents are using-
Yeah.
-mobile devices?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, that was one of the, the things that they highlighted both last year and this year, they highlighted their mobile technologies. Um, and they've got technology available for different roles or types of, of users that interact with the system, um, that can do capabilities beyond what we can do with, with our e-school system today. That is the greatest area, well, not the greatest, but that is a, a great area of weakness, uh, in today's SIS is just the mobile presence. Um, and unfortunately, there hasn't been really any change in that in probably close to a decade at this point.
Will it work with Terry's BlackBerry?
Uh, I, I don't think it will.
I, I guess I just, more of a comment, thank you. It sounds like this was a two-year journey for, for this group and, um, the information you're bringing forward was, is really great, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? I would echo Dan's remarks. Nice job. Looks promising.
Thank you. All right.
Next, Assistant Superintendent Law will present the draft of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six staffing plan to the board. Questions can be directed to Dr. Law. This will be brought back at the next meeting, just like this, because this is future action consideration on the agenda.
Thank you. And, um, Mike, would you mind turning the projector back on? Or Andy?
Did you turn it off or AV muted?
I AV muted it. Um, yeah, but my computer is hosed.
Oh, you're not gonna disconnect?
Apparently it is too late for my laptop. Um, I may still be connected, so.
Oh, Todd?
Uh, I mean, I could, I do think, uh, the board does have it on board book, so I could just speak to that if you, if you wanted.
Hey Larry?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I had one question, I'm sorry. Todd, is this line item, I'm sorry, I didn't memorize our budget, so.
Your question is, is this budgeted?
Yeah.
Uh, will be.
Okay.
So as, uh, Mike has met with me a couple of times, um, it will be brought into the budget as he brings in those final numbers to me.
Okay, all right.
And we'll implement that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Board of Education. I appreciate the opportunity. Um, the, uh, staffing plan is an annual process, uh, that we go through and it typically starts, uh, in November of each school year, when I start to have conversation with principals and, and department heads just about, uh, what, um, programmatic changes they might be having that would affect our staffing, uh, what, uh, additional FTE, uh, might they be needing or, or, or wanting. And, uh, so typically then, uh, by, uh, by winter break, I have compiled kind of a, a wish list, uh, if you will, of all the requests. And I, I bring that forward to our cabinet, uh, for, uh, more conversation. And, uh, over the course of, uh, a couple of months, we typically will, um, either, uh, revise or eliminate, uh, various positions based on, uh, further, uh, information gathering and, and conversation. And this year, uh, we, uh, really whittled that list, uh, down to just one, uh, additional FTE, uh, that district administration is, uh, requesting, which is, uh, an additional information systems, uh, analyst. And of course, it's, uh, I, maybe not ironic or, or maybe more coincidental that we've, we've heard a lot about, uh, uh, you know, technology systems and platforms with panorama and, and the new synergy, uh, proposal, uh, today. Uh, and so, of course, um, you know, there, we, we also need the, uh, the, the smart human beings, uh, to run these things. So, uh, the information systems, uh, systems, um, analyst, uh, is really a position that is responsible for, let me bring that back down. There we go. Uh, responsible for supporting the, uh, management and, and operations of, uh, and just that integration of the di- district's information systems. Uh, as we can tell from today's, uh, board meeting, you know, in, in today's, uh, environment, uh, you know, the integration of, of these systems is really critical support, um, uh, just to help ensure that, that data is maintained, um, and, and that the data is maintained and, and it's integrated in a reliable, uh, and just, uh, effective manner. Uh, and those folks that work in these types of positions really develop just, uh, a very, um, just integral knowledge of the systems, uh, that they support and also the people and the processes that are relying on that information and that data, uh, that's stored within the systems. Um, so with that knowledge, they're able to, you know, develop and, and support processes for, uh, improvement and, and automation, um, and really just with their insights are able to contribute just to the organization's overall, um, uh, efficiency. So the district currently employs one, uh, information systems analyst, and that really, um, at this point in time is below an optimal level of, of FTE. Uh, the workload, uh, just has continued to increase and we only envision it increasing even more, uh, you know, as, as we go forward. And, you know, some of that work, uh, that is, um, so, you know, some of that work and some of that backlog, um, you know, is, is at times being assisted by other tech, uh, other folks from the technology department. Um, but, you know, that's, that's not ideal and that support, uh, is not, um, provided consistently, uh, because they have their, their own roles as well. Uh, so, uh, district, uh, district administration is recommending, uh, that, uh, we take, uh, one FTE position that's, uh, currently vacated and it has not been replaced, which is, uh, a third technology support specialist and repurpose that position as an additional information systems, uh, analyst in the technology department. Uh, that would allow the department to be, uh, you know, clear that backlog of work, uh, provide greater level of support and really just be better positioned, uh, to identify opportunities to implement, uh, projects that can improve the, um, insight and efficiency of the, uh, organization. So as far as, uh, costs, uh, you know, costs and potential costs and potential offsets go, uh, we would anticipate that the salary for the additional information systems analyst would be seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, we, uh, you know, when it comes to benefits, uh, the cost of potential benefits, I, I, I estimate at fifteen thousand dollars. It's always difficult to know, uh, if someone will take benefits or not, and if they do, is it single, is it family, is it PPO, is it HMO? Uh, but I think that fifteen thousand dollars is pretty well, uh, you know, in, in a range that we can estimate. And then, of course, we do have the offset of, uh, the funds that were, that had been allocated, uh, for that third, uh, technology support specialist, uh, whose, uh, would be making around forty-five thousand dollars. So, um, you know, really as far as new money, if we're subtracting that, uh, that forty-five thousand dollars from the seventy-five, looking probably around, uh, thirty thousand dollars. So, uh, this is the only position that we are, uh, recommending, uh, to the board, uh, and I'm happy to take, uh, questions and/or Mike Wilks is happy to take questions as well, since the position will be in his, uh, department. Uh, but if the, uh, the, the goal would be to bring forward, um, uh, the staffing plan for approval at the board's April fourteenth, uh, meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Law. Questions?
Yeah, so what would be the minimal, um, training, education requirements, experience? I mean, I'm just ballpark, I mean, is it like a master's level person, is it bachelor's?
I'll let Mike field that.
College?
Mike? Sorry.
Mike, Mike.
Mike, Mike. Mike, Mike.
Sorry, is it Wednesday? I, um, so I, I have to look back at the job description, I can clarify that more with you, but I believe it's, uh, typically it's a college degree or equivalent work experience as we, as the board would accept. Um, and it's typically those who have skills in the area of, uh, database, uh, programming, scripting, that's, that sort of, uh, tech, you know, background. Uh, information systems would be the, uh, discipline formally, but, um, many folks who may not have that, that particular degree develop those skills.
Yeah, because you know, obviously in the public sphere, um, at the federal level, they're hiring people that have school education and other things that maybe not necessarily what we're looking for, but I'm just saying, they can be a whistle, so to speak, but I just wondered if you had any ideas of what you were looking for.
Yeah, absolutely. Skills are, are always important in the work that, that we do. It's, it's, you know, technology folks come from very different paths, uh, a lot of times.
And there's also, that's just my thinking, you know, because we have so many gifted, talented people out there and this technology field, it's certainly you have to have some concern for security. Um, the Air Force learned that in a hard way. Uh, people have an accessibility to things that are quite sensitive, so I hope that we're looking at some of those safeguards, uh, not just educational level, but background check, whatever you gotta do, yeah.
Yes, and all of our employees do undergo a background check.
Oh, sure.
Um, but I know that Mike, uh, you know, he, he definitely values safety and security and, um, and, and Mike, no, Mike and his staff do an excellent job of, of, of keeping our data as secure as possible.
Yeah, because we're not talking about top secret clearance or anything like that, but I just, you know, that's just a concern. We have a lot of, like I say, gifted people that are doing things on the dark web and other things and then you just never know, so it's, it's a concern.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Law.
Thank you.
This, uh, will come up at the next meeting for action. Um, information, item nine on the agenda, uh, board meeting presentation schedule is number one, FOIA requests and board correspondence, number two, and suspension reports, these are for information only. And, uh, discussion is not required, but if anyone has any questions, it's, it's out there. Uh, next, my favorite, the consent agenda, item, uh, ten, one, personnel report, resignations, retirements, leave requests, change for assignment, full-time equivalent, new hires, uh, monthly financials, February, it's a policy thing. Item three, annual resolution for joint agreement as part of the Fox Valley Cooperative. Uh, the, item four, IHSA membership renewal. Item five, gifts, grants and bequests, one thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents from Midwest Trading Horticultural Supplies, four pallets of bagged soil to support GHS and was it Western Avenue? Uh, item six, bid summary, seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, seventy cents for Midland Paper Company, district paper purchase for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Uh, item seven, request for purchase, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for firewall devices and services. Item eight, request to purchase, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars, fifty cents to install one thousand- Item seven, request for purchase, $378,650 for firewall devices and services. Item eight, request to purchase, $575,287.50 to install 1,160 student devices. Item nine, request to purchase, $322,200 for 300 staff devices. Approval is recommended. Any questions?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Second.
Tammy?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Board member comments and reports. I spent the past week and a half skiing, so I don't really have too much to say about that and with that brevity is the soul of what given the hour. Please, Dan, would you like to start? Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll be brief myself, so just a couple of things. Of all the presentations tonight, I think the common theme was really, it was all really student focused and making sure that our students and our parents have the best experience when it comes to all the things that are important to our stakeholders, so that's awesome. I think most of us went through the email conversion for our school board emails and so I thought that was really good and I'm thankful that we are consistent on those. And then, yeah, just, I know our winter season is just wrapping up and spring, spring events and performances and sports are all happening, starting up, so good luck to everyone as it gets going on that.
Thank you to everyone. I know there's a lot of information tonight. I just wanted to highlight Ann and George, their work with Panorama. I think that's, I'm a big fan of working smart and not hard and when you can find a system to really put all of our data together and have it at the fingertips of those who need it is a really remarkable thing. So I thank everybody for their research and tour schools for piloting that. I attended the Technology Task Force meeting this past week, which Mike spoke about tonight with the SIS, so thank you to him and his team for all of the effort that you put into gathering that information to really making sure you're presenting the best option for us. So thank you to you, Mike. Dr. Hooks, Dr. Barrett and I got to tour the Maids Johnstone, the special education facility at Mid Valley last week, I think that was. It was really amazing. Anybody who has a chance to go over there and see that facility up and running, it was really remarkable. We had a chance to, our tour was guided by Principal Tanner Seal and Ann Scalia from here at Geneva. We got to meet teachers, we got to meet support staff, social workers, we got to get in the classrooms and see the students in their learning environment and got to see firsthand the independent and individualized support that these students get and to see their action plans in place and it was really remarkable. The school is colorful, full of murals and just a really cool environment to be in. So watching support staff with their individual students in various learning environments was really, really amazing. So just a big shout out to that entire team and I really enjoy the relationship that we have with them. I thought that was really amazing. Congrats to our students tonight that received the excellence awards, just remarkable work across the board. And the last thing I wanted to highlight, I myself as a parent chaperoned a field trip last week for an elementary outing. So just, I know this is the season of field trips and I was reminded at the time that our parents take out of their days to support these field trips, so a big thank you to our parents who volunteer their time and a big thank you to the community hosts that welcome our students to their events and to their facilities to have some really cool learning experiences. So thank you to everyone with those.
Yeah, I don't have much today, but I would like to say congratulations to all the GHS students that were here tonight. It was fantastic to see all the things that they've accomplished and how well it done in the various sports and also educational things that are going on, so. But I'd also like to say thank you to the community member who came today and spoke on his issue that he felt was important. It's always good to have the community come in and talk to us and let them, let them pass on what they feel is important so that we can at least understand what's going out there in the community and what some of the thoughts are.
I wanted to say congratulations to everyone tonight, kind of what Paul was just saying, that seeing the different opportunities that our students have and how they thrive is wonderful. And thanks to all of our presenters tonight, you did an excellent job on everything. It's clear you took a lot of time thinking about what you wanted to talk about tonight and share with us. We had a lot of good conversation on different things and that's always good for our school board is, you know, folks see that we are learning along with them and that we have good questions to ask, so thank you. At the Technology Task Force meeting, we did get the preview of what you saw tonight and I'm always amazed at how well, like, methodical Mike is in making sure that we go through everything and on these different scenarios so that by the time it gets to us, that, you know, it's a polished product and you're ready to move forward with it. It isn't any, there isn't very much left to think about when you do that, so thank you for that. Some of the things I got to attend this last couple of weeks, the picnic for a purpose, the empty bowls event, where they had the soup, I got to take home a lovely ceramic bowl. That was a nice event that evening. It was good to see so many different people out. I also got to attend a couple of the postseason boys' basketball games and their playoff runs. That was exciting to see them. I missed the last game on Friday, but fortunately they didn't get to move on. But again, just some amazing athletes that we have and have done so well this year and that's all I have.
Thank you. Willie?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, to echo what Molly was saying, that we experienced this, and that's all I can say, is an experience going to that Maids Johnstone School, because for me personally, it removed a lot of misconceptions I had based on my previous experience working in alternative schools with models that were more punitive rather than just edifying or helping children to grow and transition into the best it can be. As I want to say, Mike, that presentation and many others, especially the panoramic, it just, I don't know, I'm trying to be sentimental in the least bit, but certainly it just brings back the thought we have at the beginning of the school year of mission possible. So when I saw your setup of the two teams, I was thinking about, yeah, this is what it requires. If you're gonna go about a mission, it's a responsibility, joint responsibility. So I was really pleased to see those listings of names and you can't get anything done unless you really are willing to listen to the lowest level, the highest person. So I really think that Andy brought to life some of the things we're talking about. And of course, the students with all their awards, they're showing us what's possible. And so it just kind of, like I said, in a maybe sentimental kind of way, going back to the beginning of the school year, it's nice to see as we're getting closer to the end of the school year that the things that we have made possible with our support. So I very much want to say, Mike, congratulations to all those and the team members, of course, make things possible. That's all.
Thank you. Steph?
I just wanted to thank everyone for an incredibly robust meeting in all the best ways possible. I think it was great to get so much different information through different presentations and then hear from the community as well. And then we kind of saw all of that with some great recognition for students in multiple different areas at the high school. So it was just really nice to kind of see that all come together and thank you for everyone who participated in that. I also want to specifically say thank you for the partnership. I think our communication, question asking and the answers we're getting, it's just great to have a dialogue around that and I always really appreciate that and learn most from that dialogue through the presentations. About a year ago, around this time, we all approved a trip to, for our choir to go to London and Paris and I was privileged to get to chaperone that trip with my own kid and I just thought I'd share a little bit about it. So it was an amazing experience for our kids in so many different ways. First of all, they got to sing in two different places in London and one in Paris and they were all churches, which meant the most amazing acoustics possible, like now we got to up the game at the auditorium. But it was just lovely to see that. They had some impromptu performances, they sang on the steps of St. Paul's Cathedral just out there for, you know, anyone passing by to hear. They sang for their supper and they sang to one of the restaurant staff that served us so wonderfully and it was really a magical experience from just all the music, but also just so great for our kids. I think we talk a lot about in our strategic plan, how we like get our kids outside the Geneva bubble and this was a wonderful experience. Not only did they go to two other countries, but just the travel alone and the responsibilities that they had to take on, the moments they had to step outside themselves and realize, you know, we're a group of 90, it doesn't depend on, like, we can't operate on one kid alone. All those are just great experiences for them, so I'm glad that we have wonderful teachers and directors who take a lot of time and effort to give our kids these experiences because I think this is something they'll never forget and they learned a lot of great life lessons. So it was just wonderful and I think that's a great thing that we do for our kids. I also got to attend this weekend the Geneva Middle School South Musical, their performance of Annie. It was great. Our own Mr. Blue made an appearance in the musical, so it was fun to see. And I know that this weekend, North has their performance of Wizard of Oz coming up, so still one chance to see some middle school kids out there doing a great job.
Thank you, Stephanie. Last item before the last item is notice as an announcement, I don't believe there are any. I had a chance to go on some of those foreign tours too when my kids were younger and it is a very rewarding experience. If there's no other business or questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Forbes, Samud.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same sign, we are adjourned.